The February 28th, 2022 Regular Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:09 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located directly in the back of the council chambers, right above the clock. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard. Here.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Viallak.
Here.
You who have a quorum, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, and Brown are with us in council chambers. Councilmember Viallak is participating telephonically.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And, yes ma'am, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda will stand as presented. We are now at special orders of the day. There is nothing scheduled, so we'll move to commission and agencies' report. We will begin with a report from the project managers of the EPL study and associated partnership agreement. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Sure, Madam Mayor. This is the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Planning and Environmental Linkages Study and Associated Partnership Agreement. We have Kelly Summers, project manager from the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, and Renee Whitesell, if I pronounced that correctly, project manager with Dowell. Another chair, do you want to co-present?
Sure.
Thank you so much for giving us time today to discuss our project, the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor, Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Planning and Environmental Linkages Study project. My name is Kelly Summers, and I am the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities Project Manager for the project. With me tonight is Renee Whitesell. She's from our consultant Dowell, and she's here to give you a presentation on the project and our associated partnering agreement. So, Renee?
Great. Thanks very much, Kelly, and thanks to all of you for having us here this evening. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Renee Whitesell, and I am the consultant project manager on the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Planning and Environmental Linkages, and I'll just shorten that to PEL study. We've got a very short presentation. So, first up, I'd just like to introduce you to the project. So, the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities has identified the need for an alternative corridor in the Wasilla area since the 1980s, and numerous studies have been conducted looking at an alternative corridor location, but they haven't been successful in moving a project forward to actual project development. As you're all aware, there has been sustained and relatively high population growth in the Matsu, and that's increasing traffic volumes and creating significant traffic congestion along the corridor during peak periods, as well as some safety concerns. So, there's awareness that network improvements are needed, and those are creating a wide variety of environmental resource, land use, and public involvement challenges. As a consequence of that, the Department of Transportation has chosen to use the planning and environmental linkages process to smooth the project through the project schedule, which is now showing up on the screen. It's anticipated that this project will take approximately three years. We kicked off with an evaluation of baseline conditions in fall of 2021, and right now, as of winter 2021, we are currently looking at a draft purpose and need. We are planning to have a public open house meeting at the end of March of this year, so March 28th, at which time we'll be presenting the baseline conditions and draft purpose and need. We'll then move forward to identifying corridor alternatives, screening alternatives, and trying to refine them down to a single preferred alternative before moving forward with summarizing everything into a PEL study. Then we'll look at how a project can be funded and how it may potentially be phased to be delivered in fiscally sustainable packages. So, there are many opportunities for public outreach. As mentioned, there is one in March of this year, and we're planning three more public meetings moving forward. We also have a technical advisory committee and a stakeholder advisory committee supporting the project, and the city of Wasilla has representatives on the technical advisory committee. At the kickoff meeting, the technical advisory committee was represented by Mr. Archie Giddings, who I understand has now retired, and the new public works director, Danielle Bishoff, is going to be taking over in that role. During our kickoff meeting in October of 2021, we presented a draft partnership agreement that set out a mutual commitment to the members of the technical advisory committee to participate in the technical advisory committee, share information, provide opportunities to review and comment on draft planning materials prior to public review, to communicate your agency or council's needs and priorities, and to work collaboratively with the project team with the intent to develop supportable planning products that can then move forward into future National Environmental Policy Act project reviews, and that the work used as part of the PEL process can be used to hasten the development of future projects that arise from the study. So, our goal is to actually see that corridor built out there at some stage in the near future. The partnership agreement that was presented in your package is non-binding, and at the kickoff meeting, the city of Wasilla's representative requested that the project team come and present to the council and request a resolution to enable the partnership agreement to be signed. So, that's the purpose of our presentation today. I've spoken with Danielle Bishoff, who's taking over as part of the technical advisory committee, and she has noted that she will assist with the resolution process, and you can expect to see it on your next council meeting agenda. So, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have on the project. I'd also like to invite you to take a look at our project website, which is parkshighwayalternative.com.
Council, is there any questions? Calling.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for presenting today. It's pretty general in nature. Does your website have a more intricate detail of the route that you're considering? What roads may be accessed, what waterways may be crossed, et cetera? I mean, again, it's very general in nature, but I have no idea where you're really going here.
That's a great question. We actually don't know where we're going yet either, and that's one of the reasons why we have this three-year process ahead of us. Part of the project itself is actually looking at locations for different alternative routes and thoroughly evaluating them to try and understand potential impacts before narrowing in on a preferred alternative or alternatives. So, we're very early in the project, and you're welcome to participate.
Thank you. And then, just to follow up, Madam Mayor, and then, when you do present that, you're saying you want a resolution prior to council being able to see, for example, like, the top three alternative routes that you would be considering?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, is it going to be prudent to wait until we have something before us in order to bring forward a resolution, or is the resolution just supporting the aspect that we want in our territorial route around Wasilla?
So, the resolution itself is not with regard to supporting a specific route or alternative. What the resolution is seeking is that you will have a member of your council be part of our technical advisory committee, and that we will work together on the project to identify alternatives and to screen them. So, it's actually a resolution to work together. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. One of your early slides showed the project study area, which seemed to be the Parks Highway south, that one there, of Wasilla, but I'm sure you're aware, there already is an alternative corridor that's been worked on for years and years and years through the improvement of Bogart Road. You know, I mean, so now you'll see many professional drivers get off on the trunk and go up to Bogart and then come across the pitman and come down just to get, you know, past the Wasilla city center, so to speak. Is the northern portion not being considered?
The northern portion is part of a separate circular network for within the Matsu itself. I know that there is continuing work going on looking at intra-regional corridors, while this particular corridor is a corridor that's part of the national highway system. So, really, it's an alternative east-west route through the city of Wasilla.
And I think, I've only lived here 40 years, but I think we've been looking at this for 40 years. You know, and progress on this has, even been some studies on potential routes and stuff like that, and progress has always been zero on this, which is the reason that Bogart Road alternative seemed to work so well as far as being able to acquire a right-of-way. And I believe there's even some room for expansion and things like that. It seems to me we're beating a dead horse here. I mean, it is, you know, it's federal money, but that doesn't mean that we need to, we need to spend it. I'd like to see the project area expanded, if there's a way that you guys could talk about that. Thank you.
Okay. So, the project area focus south of the Parks Highway was actually building on previous planning efforts that have taken place, and there particularly is a concern with providing connection on the western side of the city with the chain of lakes area connecting back through to the Parks Highway. So, on that basis, that was why the decision was made to focus on alternatives south of the existing Parks Highway. As mentioned, the Bogart Road improvements are part of an intra-regional network, so looking at improving transportation and circulation within the Matsu, and this is more focused on being a statewide or national highway system route.
I appreciate your comments, but I stand by mine. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
I have a question. At the current time, the Alaska DOT has got major projects on the Connect Goose Bay Road that are still ongoing and slowly moving forward, I hope. That being said, are you coordinating any of the efforts with the state with this study with the ongoing plans and development on the Goose Bay Road?
Yeah, that's a good question. We are very aware of the ongoing projects on Connect Goose Bay. In fact, that is being handled by Dowell as well. So, we are talking very closely together to look at the impacts of the projects jointly.
Is there any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we will now hear a report from the Burchell High School Student Representative. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Ledford and fellow city council members. My name is Kiara Holt. The only new and big things we have is the start of semester three after-school classes. We have Creator's Lab, and that consists of 3D printing, circuit board building, robotics, and hydraulics, freedom riders. It's based on writing class, based on the book, pottery, culinary arts, fitness activities, and tutoring. And then, the last big thing that we had, we had just finished, is Wacko Week. Kind of a success because of all the snow days or the at-home learning days we had kind of interrupted it, but we had, on Monday, we had a game at lunch called Mummy, and that was also pajama day. Tuesday, we had chopsticks and Skittles as our game, and it was funny hat day. Wednesday was pencil toss and era day. Thursday was musical chairs and crazy hair day, and then Friday, we had our big wacko competition at the end of the day, and that was class color day. That's it.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We appreciate you coming and giving us an update. We are now at public participation. There is one public hearing this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's ordinance serial number 2206, amending fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $18,610 from the miscellaneous capital projects fund fund balance for the purpose of acquiring optical scan ballot tabulators and related election equipment for use in city elections.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 26-06 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward, and we begin by stating your first and last name. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 22-06?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance serial 2206.
Is there a second?
Franklin Brown, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and signed by Councilmember Brown to adopt ordinance serial number 22-06. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we amend the, or the, start all over. I move to amend the appropriation amount by deleting 18610 to 21357. That's the amendment. The reason for this is the email that came out with the change in the costs that Jamie has provided us as a backup. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I second the amendment.
Okay, now, is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, would the body be open to just rounding that up to 21360?
Thank you.
Still amended.
Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Graham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Viallak?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham Johnson, and Viallak in support.
Now, is there any further discussion on ordinance serial number 22-06 as amended?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could we please have a quick summary from the clerk with regard to this particular ordinance and why the necessity to move it forward?
Thank you. Through the chair, to Councilmember Sullivan Leonard. So, I was notified in January, well, previously, let me look up. So, ballot tabulators are the machines that count ballots in the election when you go to vote. They're called optical scan ballot tabulators, and we have always borrowed the state's voting, Alaska State Division of Elections voting equipment, ballot tabulators. We were notified by the state in January that those ballot tabulators would no longer be available for municipal use. After talking with the vendor based on supply chains and our timeline from getting ballot tabulators in place and tested, I did make the request for the tabulators and associated equipment this fiscal year. Normally, if those issues weren't there, I would have waited until the FY23 budgeting process.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yes. I believe, though, that we do have an election coming up for city council in October, and will we be up and running in time for that?
Chair, Councilmember Johnson, yes, if this passes tonight, there should be no issues with deploying these tabulators in October 2022 election.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on ordinance serial number 2206 as amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Viallak?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance serial number 2206 as amended passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, and Viallak in support. And I should have noted this earlier for those streaming the meeting. Council seat F is vacant.
We are now two persons to be heard. Mr. Tom Sterns, please begin your testimony by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sterns. I'm the senior ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. We still have board vacancies, so if anybody wants to be a board member or you know someone that would be a good fit for us, please contact our main desk office. We have a new member on our team. Her name is Jen Anderson. She's a case manager. What's a case manager do? Seniors come to her with their needs, and she works with the seniors to find and create a solution. You have a flyer with you that tells all about what she does and her card, and so she's a new asset for us, for our seniors. Then, we also have a health fair coming up on Saturday. Now, caution here, this is a by appointment only, so you would have to take this little flyer and make an appointment, and it's not free. It costs all the different things, the prices of the things that are on there, but it will be on this Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 noon. And then, we also, tomorrow is that Tuesday, and our nutrition team has invited you to come. We are going to have shrimp and grits, and our CEO, James Drayton, has invited all of you to come and be his guests tomorrow at this lunch. He would like to see you all there. So, any questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, Tom, is there a residency requirement for the board of directors? Do you have to be a member of the, I mean, do you have to be living in the city of Wasilla?
No, I don't think so. No, I don't think you have to do that. You do have to be, I believe, a member of Wasi, though. So, membership in the, as a member of Wasi, Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated.
So, you'd have to join Wasi in order to apply. Is that correct?
I think so, but once you call them and you talk to our front desk, they'll give you all the information that you need.
Thank you.
Sir?
Any more? Mr. Graham?
Thank you. Just to follow up for Mr. Johnson, yes, you do need to be a member of Wasi, but there is no length of, length of term requirement for, so you can join and then become a member of the board, and there is no residency requirement in Wasilla. There are several board members from the Palmeri.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Sterns. We are now at the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the title of items for approval under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the agenda to take ordinance serial number 2208 to new This is item 8.2.2.
I need a second?
Councilman Johnson, a second.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so moved. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On our amended consent agenda, we have for approval before you now are the regular meeting minutes of February 14th, 2022. At this time, we have one ordinance that we're introducing, recommended public hearing date of March 14th, 2022, and that's ordinance serial number 2207, amending the fiscal year 2022 youth court budget by accepting and appropriating $1,650 from the Alaska Peace Officers Association, $7,500 from the Department of Health and Social Services, Division of Juvenile Justice, and $750 from Luke, Shawna, and Delbert Henry for costs associated with the annual United Youth Courts of Alaska Conference in Wasilla, Alaska.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Councilman Johnson moves that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and signed by Councilmember Graham to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are now at unfinished business, and there's no items scheduled, so we'll move to new business. Madam Clerk?
First item under new business is an update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
I've not taken any new measures in response to COVID-19. Madam Clerk, would you read the second?
You bet. So, we have an ordinance then under new business. This is up for introduction with, again, a recommended public hearing date of March 14th, 2022. That's ordinance serial number 2208, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $20,000 within the vehicle fund and transferring $20,000 from the General Fund Administration Department for additional funding to replace the mayor's vehicle.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number 2208.
Is there a second?
Franklin Brown, second.
Madam Mayor, may I clarify?
Yes.
Please. Is the motion to introduce it?
Yes.
At a public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and signed by Councilmember Brown. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The intent of moving this into new business was just so that we could get a little bit more clear report on the effect of a one-year delay on purchasing this vehicle as opposed to paying prices, you know, which are in the packet here are notably considerably higher due to, you know, the current lack of supply there. So, when we actually look at this next week, or, excuse me, in two weeks, you know, I'd like to, you know, have the administration's take on, I mean, can we wait another year replacing this vehicle to take advantage of a little bit better pricing because availability of vehicles theoretically is going to be much higher in a year from now as opposed to replacing this vehicle now, moving it over basically to administration, general services, you know, what's the effect going to be on the city operations? I'd like to hear about that when we actually go through this. I just don't want to surprise anybody in two weeks.
Mr. Tankersley?
Through the mayor, Councilman Graham. I don't think there's any issue waiting other than a speculation of price. I know that prices are escalated right now, but they may be escalated a year from now. And I'm not asking for that today, but thank you very much. I just want to, next week, be able to discuss that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Follow-up question to Councilmember Graham. Right now, our budget states 20,000. We know that prices have escalated. Do we have a better amount? Do we have a better amount than would be, you know, or do you think $20,000 is going to be sufficient?
What I can ascertain is $60,000 is the amount that has been looked at from lot price. Which is, we know from other legislation that councils adopted on that emergency resolution that was done. Some of these car dealers are not adhering to state contract because of the price. That's where we're at, the car price.
So this is a three-year plan then within the budget, as far as I understand. Is that correct? Yeah, we allocate $20,000 a year for a total budget item of $60,000.
No, sir. So, well, $60,000 is the, we had $40,000 in the budget already. We're asking council to add additional $20,000 to that.
Got it. Madam Mayor? We'll discuss it next time.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm just concerned, is $20,000 going to be enough? With world situations, prices already risen, and with what's happening in the world right now, and speculation of what's going to happen, prices could rise more. When is the approximate date you were looking to purchase this, looking at world events?
If the ordinance was adopted, we'd be looking right away. If it adopts on March, we'd be immediately out.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this will be brought up at the next meeting or not, but I guess I'd like a little history with how often our vehicles are replaced. I know there's a cycle that we follow. And I know the mayor puts on a lot of miles. And so is the cycle like, you know, once every four years, five years? Are we looking at the same type of vehicle? Are we looking at a smaller vehicle, electric vehicle?
The mayor, Councilman Sullivan Leonard. So sometimes it depends on the vehicle and the department it's being driven. Vehicles are typically on anywhere between a five and seven-year cycle. And things that factor that are condition, miles, and the like. It is the intent of the mayor's vehicle to be handed down typically to the deputy administrator department. And then her vehicle gets passed down to the museum or another department. And the museum currently does have a vehicle that is subject to surplus, pastime. So that would be the...
Right. And what year is the present vehicle?
The mayor's vehicle?
Yeah.
I, I apologize for that.
I'm just curious.
I don't know.
At the next meeting.
Yes, we'll have that information at the next meeting.
And if we could, at the next meeting, include mileage and repair history for the last year.
Okay, is there further discussion? There are none. Madam Mayor, uh, Madam? Give this to you, Jamie.
You're doing a great job. I like my job. You keep your job.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. And this is on introduction of ordnance serial number 2208 with public hearing set March 14th, 2022. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, and Vlach in support. Council seat F is vacant.
We are now at communications. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the IAM and meeting minutes.
Thank you. For informational purposes, this evening, IAM number 2202, monthly financial reports for the period ending January 31st, 2022, to include the month-to-date expenditure report and disbursements greater than $10,000. We also have Airport Advisory Commission meeting minutes, January 20th, 2022.
We are at audience comments. Yes.
Moving to audience comments, may I ask a question based on the Airport Advisory Commission?
Sure.
Thank you. And this would be for Director Bishop. In the, under staff reports, which is item six of the minutes here, it says, acquiring additional property to the south to extend the runway an additional 5,100 feet. Is that correct? It says although some are suggesting to make it a little bit longer, but are we looking to extend an additional 5,100 feet to the existing? Is that correct?
Danielle Bishop, Director of Public Works, Councilmember Graham, we are, that is a technical error, correct? We are looking at expanding to 5,100 feet, however, we are also looking to up in our master plan and identify possible length for the runway. This was a discussion point at the advisory meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, a follow-on question to that. In the advisory committee right now, do you have, or are you working with people knowledgeable about the runway lengths that we would be required, say, for a corporate jet or whatever size jet we intend to be able to accommodate?
Yes, so we are working with our consulting firm, our engineering consulting firm that we have a contract with, and as a part of that, we're looking at additional running avenues. So what is, what's available through FAA and other routes that we can work for expansion at the airport? What qualifies under those methods? What is the, what aircraft length that we should be designing for? As well as the structural section of our runway and the condition of the runway that's out there now.
So are you, you actually have the, a consulting company with such airport construction background and aviation experience to do this?
Yes, sir, we do. And that's a contract that went out for our P several years ago, and they're under contract with us.
Anything further? Okay, we are now on to audience comments. Anyone present who would like to address the City Council at this time? Okay, now we are on to council comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, in terms of our council vacancy, the F that we're going to fill at the next meeting, I did send out an email to the council today requesting questions. So if you have interview questions that you would like to submit, if you could have those to me if possible by this Friday, 5 o'clock, that would be fantastic. And then more information on that whole process, including applications and cover letters for the candidates, will be provided in the meeting packet for you. In terms of spring lobbying, it's my understanding the mayor's spring lobbying trip has been pushed to April, and council members Brown and Vlach are tentatively scheduled to join Madam Mayor based on schedules, along with the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce and Deputy Mayor, or Deputy Administrator Nygaard. We only have one regular meeting in March. That'll be on March 14th. And if you haven't already done so, please file your public official financial disclosure statements with APOC by March 15th, provide a copy to my office, or contact us. We'll request a copy from APOC. And then, in the clerk's report and also online, or if you need a copy from me, we have all of the special meeting, April and May dates for budget. We have quite a few of those scheduled, so save the date on those. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the clerk and I had thought today might be a good day to do a mini-training, a five-to-seven-minute mini-training. So without objection by the council, I will jump in very quickly. One of the things that we're facing right now in the state is the red drifting of the city of Alaska, and we recently had a case come out. We're involved in that case, and it has an Open Meetings Act. And I say we, Bert Horton's involved in that case, and the borough is also involved in that case. And the Open Meetings Act, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, came front and center in that case. And it was a reminder, at least for me, that there are a lot of dangers that lurk in the peripheral components of the Open Meetings Act. And it's really an important, important part of what the council does here to be familiar with that. It'll hopefully keep us all out of trouble. So I'm just, I'm not going to spend time going through what the Open Meetings Act is, when it applies, and all of those general training pieces. I'm going to talk about hot-button topics and things that come up that nobody expects. I think one of these things is the Open Meetings Act requires that you enter into executive session with a motion that's very specific. Usually, the clerk, especially here in Wasilla, keeps council on track with that motion. But sometimes, the topics can be more difficult and more sensitive. And so there's a tendency to want to say things that are very circular, like a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters that are confidential as a matter of law. So, and one of the things I want council members to remember is that really that type of motion has provided no information to the public about why or what the, what the executive session's going to be about and the scope of that. So what the cases tell us is you don't have to be so specific as to destroy the need for the executive session. You do have to be specific enough for people to say, oh, that, that topic does sound like it's pretty sensitive. That seems to be a personnel matter, or that seems to have, that involves a case and whether or not, you know, what the next steps of the city might be in that case. So even though the code is very express about when you can go into executive session, knowing that just because it falls under one of those provisions, it's not going to be enough unless the public understands and has some notice as to why, why it's lawful. That is one hot-button topic. The next is, we have a couple different cases in Alaska where we see that going into executive session to consider applicants is okay. We have cases that say that's okay. We have cases that tell us going into executive session to evaluate employees is not okay. And it really is not a, there's no bright line. The city of Wasilla has been, everything that you have done has been lawful and in compliance with the law. So I know that sometimes you may go into executive session, for example, to talk about an evaluation. And the presumption there is that's to afford council the ability to talk about sensitive information. But as this body of law is, is being developed, I noticed a distinct trend towards disclosure and public transparency. For that reason, one of the things that the clerk and I talk a lot about is what is the best practice? Not just what's legal, but what will remain legal, you know, and what is going to serve the council's interest? And what's going to comply with the general purpose of the Open Meetings Act, which is, in fact, to aid the people in the conduct of their business. So one of the things we talk about is how do we get more specific in our analysis of when we do and do not go into executive session? And make sure that when we can, when it is efficient and also warranted, that we change our practices, that the council and the city are not afraid to take a new step or go in a new direction if it serves the purpose of the Open Meetings Act and the needs of the council. So you may see, for example, an application, evaluation process. You may see the clerk suggest that you do that in open session, or that I'll recommend that you do that in open session. And if there's a need or even a section that may require executive session, that there is a time for that, that there is a component that maybe goes into executive session. Sometimes, I mean, I have seen councils want to regale some of their employees with affirmations and accolades and really celebrate them. And so, given the purpose of the Open Meetings Act, that should be done in public, right? That makes complete sense, that that should be, that that is warranted. So that's another hot-button topic. And so those are really the two that come to mind. The other one, of course, all of you are more familiar with, which is, the Open Meetings Act is very easy to violate in small communities. In fact, I would say it probably happens everywhere because it's impossible not to when you're circulating around a community and you're engaged. And council members are generally some of the most engaged members with their communities. It's what drove them to run for council, right? And that is true also for the mayor. So I think what we see is fear that has, that doesn't allow council members, and, and this is not a specific comment, but this, in general, owning the ability to cure a violation of the Open Meetings Act is an incredibly powerful tool of complying with the Open Meetings Act. It is one of the few statutes that says in its language, if you cure, if you solve it with a new meeting, if you address it, if you bring it up, if you disclose, you're going to be okay. And that's part of the statute itself. So that would be the only other hot-button topic, which is, you may make mistakes, but you actually have in the law the ability to correct them. And you have a great, very sophisticated council clerk's office that can help you do that effectively. Any questions? Training is officially over.
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor to the council. Traditionally, within a business environment, personnel reviews are usually done in private in that we would be discussing employee performance, recommendations for improvement, recommendations for training plans, and compensation packages, all of which traditionally have been off the record from any public disclosure. So is what you're saying is that we cannot go into executive discussion to talk about those particular things?
Well, I mean, it's a complicated question with the, with the city because, for one, the mayor as the officer that is addressing personnel in general, right? That is not going to be a topic of executive session usually, if it, or of council in general for management purposes. If it is, if there is a personnel matter, your code expressly calls out personnel as a appropriate basis for executive session. And of course, there's other laws that protect confidentiality for personnel matters in general. Your employees, however, clerk?
Me.
Right, contract employees, there's a little bit of a different relationship there because council as a body is employing individuals. So if you're going to want to engage in a discussion that affects our reputation and character, then you will need to follow the executive session. And you may go into executive session unless one of those employees of council, unless they, they request that it be done in open session, which is their right under the code, and it's an express right. And it's, it is, it's a push and pull, and there's inefficiencies and awkwardness that come from some of these. And we see that with the Public Records Act, too. Just to further emphasize this, there was a case where they received a bunch of applications for a police chief position and for a city manager position. And the court decided that all of those applications had to be public. When they, but they allowed, because that was, because they had these municipalities that represented to the applicants that it would be private, the court gave them a stay and said, you can withdraw your applications if you want to before they're made public. And 10 out of, I think, 30 applicants withdrew their applications. So those municipalities lost those applicants because of the fear of being, having their applications made public. And that's, you know, and that, whether, whether you see that as a, a, a good thing or a bad thing, it is a very real thing that there is this pull between what is the implication of this? And to the extent council can balance that, when we're looking at evaluations and applications and what's being considered and how, that's, you know, that's, that's sort of the role we have to play. But it's also, if you think about it, you could technically, all of the salaries for city employees, for example, are public information, right? And that's very unusual compared to a private. So the inefficiencies and the privacies afforded in private, in, the private entities doesn't parallel public entities. But there are protections, and we do balance them. So, I know, you're typical gray. I think I'll answer your question.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Madam Attorney, for your comments. So based on what you called your first hot button, you know, which was going into executive session without being real clear as to the reason that it needs to be in executive session.
session without being real clear as to the reason that it needs to be in executive session, are you suggesting that when a council member moves to go into executive session, that the mayor get verbal thumbs up from you to say, yeah, that, that motion meets what I believe to be the legal hurdle to go into executive session? I mean, wouldn't?
Well, I think the, the great thing about Wasilla is the use of a very sophisticated professional clerk who's, you know, and also I think there's a lot of, and the administration and the council and the clerks, the work on the agenda, most of that is usually done, you know? And those are, that's done. And it's, I think, my job or whoever's sitting here to say, hey, that's not specific enough if for some reason we deviate from the, the motion. But the, one thing the clerk can do and does is the agenda often can provide a cure and protection because the agenda has the notice on it. So it's, I say it more for these executive sessions that may pop up because that is happening elsewhere. So while it's a hot button topic, it's a hot button topic Wasilla's handling very well over here.
So once again, yes or no question wasn't answered. But, but for instance, here on today's agenda, item 14, you know, following our comments, is executive session. I can move that we go into executive session for whatever reason comes up and the clerk may not be aware that I am planning to do that. So it's not, you know, it doesn't say why we're going into executive session and the clerk may not know that I'm going to ask for executive session in that. So once again, back to the yes or no question.
Well, there is no yes or no questions.
In the real world, there are yes or no questions.
If you, if that happens, as I sit here, I will listen to your motion. And if I think it is vulnerable, I will recommend a, a more specific motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, just with some institutional knowledge. So typically what we have done in Wasilla, if we know ahead of time, you'll, you remember a few meetings ago, we had a threatened litigation on a piece of property. So we were specific about why we were going and it was going to be attorney-client privilege. We had the address of the parcel and in fact the owner's name. So we knew the agenda, we knew we were covered. It was all, all set. Say today you were, I don't know, say one of the ordinances, we were up for public hearing and we were debating it and all of a sudden there was some new information or we thought, gosh, Holly has a report on it. That qualifies for executive session. That might, while that might not be on the agenda under executive session, because the item is on the agenda, it would be permissible to move in to executive session. But to be very specific, why are we going in? We have never, under my watch, moved to executive session. First of all, we wouldn't, we couldn't have the discussion because it's not noticed. It couldn't just be out of the blue.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you very much. You know, I'm kind of a government nerd. I watch other councils and how they operate. And they often operate going into executive session without notice, so to speak. So that was my question to Ms. Wells, but there is no answer, so I withdraw that question.
The answer is you can go, no, I think, so you're saying can you, or can you go into, can you or can't you go into executive session?
I know I can. I mean, the law is pretty strict that I can. I'm just asking, your, your consideration was that we, was that we phrase it?
It's not, no, no.
In a very particular way, so.
So let me be very clear. The law absolutely and expressly requires you to have a specific motion that identifies why you're going into executive session.
I can make that motion here on item 14.
But the law does not require that you have early note, like that you include notice of the executive session. I think that's what you're saying. Yes, okay. I totally agree with you. But your motion has to be, and that I don't think is what Jamie is saying. I think what the clerk is saying is the practice in Wasilla is to include, is to limit executive sessions unless you're in an emergency situation or something like that, to provide notice. And that's your consistent and uniform practice, which is a best practice. That doesn't mean all municipalities have that best practice, but that keeps the public informed and keeps the city focused on what's on the agenda. So that is the goal. So while you could technically call an executive session without it being noticed on the agenda, then the importance of the motion being incredibly awful and specific because it will be all you have, right? That becomes even more important. And the, and the truth is, this is an area where you don't always have the law that will stand. And that's because courts are constantly looking at what the public needs in a matter of transparency. They look at what they want to see, what best practices would be, and they interpret language. So just because what we do is lawful and correct now, doesn't mean we win the lawsuit later. And that is what your clerk is always trying to do, is give you best practices that are really compliant with the purpose of the Open Meetings Act. So.
So once again, my question has not been answered. So I'm just going to, this is my turn to talk, Holly. So once again, my question has not been answered. And that's fine. That's, you know, that's your firm. That is, that is your firm's option to answer it how it wants. So I didn't find an answer that I was looking for.
Well, I want to talk.
Just so, just so you know, so I'm done with this conversation. So I'd like to move on to a different hot button here, hot button number two, which Mr. Johnson talked about, you know, employee evaluations. And just agree with Mr. Johnson, employee evaluations. You mentioned to be laudatory and things like that. That's not really an evaluation. That's kind of a different sort of thing. But when it comes to evaluating the performance, you know, of a contractor or employee, you know, in the real world, you know, those typically are not held, you know, the whole world doesn't see the employee evaluation of Stugiram as, you know, whatever job I'm doing. And I, and I think we should certainly endeavor to keep the process and the practice that we have in place to do that. I would certainly appreciate knowing if there's any lawsuits that come up over the years that would endanger that. Thank you.
And I would just, for the purposes of the record, because it certainly is my job not to leave questions unanswered. As a councilmember, Graham, I would like to try to answer your question. So I think your question is, can you, if you're into executive session with open minutes? And the answer is yes, so long as you comply with the law and how you do it, right? And is that the question? I just want to make sure I answer it.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Graham?
Oh, me again?
Any comments?
Number one, I wanted to reiterate what I talked about at the last meeting. You know, the city has expended a tremendous amount of funds to purchase a lot of COVID-19 at-home test kits. And almost all of those are on the street, so to speak, at this point. But, but not all of them obviously have been used. The expiration date on the back of those has been extended by the FDA for 90 days. I think we had two batches, if I'm not correct, Troy. One said expired in February and one said expired in March. But the FDA has extended the expiration date on that by 90 days. So if you do have those kits at home or in your business, don't toss them in the recycle pile yet, you know, kind of, kind of wait because they are going to be very hard to replace. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're doing that. I also wanted to commend the city staff for the great job they did managing the Iron Dog start out at the Menard Center. You know, I think that went about as flawlessly as it could go. Didn't go flawlessly, but I think it went about as flawlessly as it could go. And there was a lot of people involved in that, a lot of planning involved in that. So congratulations to the mayor and her staff for making that happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment. Sorry for the lateness. Early mess got in the way and for that.
This time. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No comments at this time. Thanks.
Councilmember Vlach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry I couldn't hear you too much. I have caught a bug, but I did use one of our in-home COVID test kits and it is negative. So it could just be the common cold after all. But thank you.
Get better. Councilmember Johnson?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. I too want to pray Scott and his team at the Menard Center for the job that they did. It was a big undertaking and they performed it flawlessly. So thank you so much. I was there for the start and for the finish. The guys that got the red lantern, we started like at 7:15 in the banquet and they came in after we had already started. So they just got there. But it, it was a great thing and we are hoping that it will become a yearly thing. That's, that's our hope. So, and this probably won't mean much to anybody but me, but anyway, Craig Morgan, a country music star, was there to sing the National Anthem. I thought that was really cool. So that's all I have. There are no items scheduled for executive session. And with no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless objection is raised. You're in none. The meeting is adjourned at 7:11.